I'd like to call this meeting to order with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. With that, I have something to read tonight. Due to one of our directors attending by electronic means, I shall read this statement. A governmental body shall conduct a meeting by electronic means only in circumstances where such a meeting in person is impossible or impractical, or if the governmental body provides public access to the conversation of the meeting to the extent reasonably possible. The place of the meeting is the place in which the communication originates, and the minutes of the meeting shall include a statement explaining why the person was impossible, why the, while, while the meeting in person was impos- impossible or impractical as pursuant to Iowa Code 21.8. The reason for this meeting being held by electronic means is to do to Susan Lance's out-of-town travel. All right, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the August 24th minutes?
So move.
Second.
Do we have any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to the presentation of accounts payable. Dr. Shaw, you reviewed those accounts.
I did, and I move that we accept the accounts payable.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions to ask? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to the Human Resources Report, I'll turn it over to Dr. Talbot, and we have had an addition, and Dr. Pati has passed that out.
Yes, the copy of the report that you received in your electronic packet on Friday has been updated. Interviews were conducted on Friday due to the need to add an additional special education strategist, one physician at Holmes Junior High School. A verbal offer has been extended by the principal, and that has been accepted, and that offer will be contingent on our satisfaction by our standard pre-employment processes and practices, so recommend the acceptance of the amended HR report.
Thank you, Adrian. Do I have a motion to approve the HR report?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions for Adrian? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on then to the approval of the Fiscal 2015 Treasurers' Reconciliation Report. John, would you be willing to come up? This is John Steen, who's our Treas- Board Treasurer, and he'll walk us through the report.
All right. Welcome, and thank you. Good evening, everybody. Treasury's Reconciliation Report is for the Cedar Falls Community School District for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2015. I will start by reading the figures of the depository bank's Wells Fargo Bank checking accounts. The General Fund had a balance on June 30, 2015, at $1,332.95. Student Activity Fund had a balance of $98,402.21. The Food Service Fund had a balance of $300,329.62. And the Schoolhouse Fund had a balance at $2,145,891.59. In terms of investments, in Wells Fargo regular savings, there was $82,072.15. Lincoln Savings Bank, Elnut Christianson Savings, $1,431,336.54. Lincoln Savings Bank Money Market, $4,008.94,325.16. And the Lincoln Savings Bank Savings Passbook, $15,296.79.56. And the Farmer State Bank CD, $1,834,533. So the total bank balances, Treasury balances as of June 30, 2015, were $27,413,180.78. Secretary's balances, the Operating Fund had $11,954,556.29. The Management Fund, $1,201,660.7. The Trust and Agency Fund, $1,658,705.09. Student Activity Fund, $579,081.69. Food Service Fund, $501,491.99. Entrepreneurial Fund, $6,0567.93. Local Option Fund, $7,748.7.34. And the Pebble Fund, $3,397.69.26. And Debit Service, $1,044.31. Those total 260, excuse me, $26,849.519.97. The difference between the Treasury's balance and Secretary's balance is $563,660.81. The difference is outstanding checks of $441,251.08. Meridian Bank Jet Pay Deposits, $7,045.45. Federal Estate Taxes, excuse me, $110,369. And deposits in transit, $4,099.528, to equal the $563,660.81. So the Secretary's balance again at June 30, 2015, $27,413,180.78.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for John? Do I have a motion to approve the Fiscal 2015 Treasury's Reconciliation Report?
So move.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. John, stick around.
I will.
Okay. All right. Item F on the agenda, Appointment of the Treasurer. I need a motion to appoint the Treasurer. Hopefully you will appoint for another year, John Steen.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Do we need to do a roll call then?
Yep, we will, please. Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper.
Yes.
Dr. Kenyon.
Yes.
Mrs. Lance.
Yes.
Dr. Shaw.
Yes.
And Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
And with that, I would say that John is hereby the Treasurer for the next school year, and if you'd want to come up, Mrs. Coyle will do her thing.
John, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of School Board Treasurer in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now and hereafter required by law?
I will. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the official notification of election results from the County Auditor's Office.
Okay, I do have the abstract of votes on the canvas from the school board election that was held last week Tuesday. Final tally is Joyce Coyle, 1,754 votes, Steven Egger, 620, Jenny Hansel, 1,289, Jeff Haseman, 1,774, Susie Hines, 1,842, Dr. Kenyon, James Kenyon, 1,871, Jenny Leeper, 1,960, and there were 52 scattered votes. So the Board has hereby declares that Jeff Haseman, Susie Hines, Dr. James Kenyon, and Jenny Leeper have been duly elected for the office of School Board Director for the Cedar Falls Community School District for a period of four years.
Thank you, Dan.
And there's no action necessary for that. We just have to present that to the school board, so.
Okay, before I adjourn the meeting, I want to say a few words to you all. I've written it down because I think it just makes it easier for me. As I begin this next chapter, I would like to say to you, your dedication to our students has always been unwavering. No one should ever question any of you around this table about that question. Together we've told the story, together we've given the facts, and together we were not afraid to answer the questions or find the answers to those questions. Even though we might not have all agreed on everything, we've agreed on most things, and what we have always been committed to doing is what was best for our kids. To our new Board members, please take the time to learn, this is, at this table, there is a wealth of knowledge, and they are very willing to answer your questions and help you move into this next exciting chapter in your life. It will be a great experience for you, and you are very fortunate to serve in this district. I would like to leave you with this quote by Jim Rowan, entrepreneur and writer. "The challenge of leadership is to be strong but not rude, be kind but not weak, be bold but not bully, be thoughtful but not lazy, be humble but not timid, be proud but not arrogant, have humor but not folly." Not without folly, sorry. And last but not least, this was given to me by a dear friend. "No matter how you feel, get up, dress up, show up, and never give up." I want to thank you all for the kind words each and every day and all of your support. My husband's in the back of the room, and I want to thank him because he has supported me for the last 22 years unconditionally. Thank you, Dave. Without you, I wouldn't be here. You have all supported me unconditionally. I have been all in for what's best for kids and will continue to be #CedarFallsProud. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. It's been an honor.
(applause) to do is I need to determine whether there's quorum. And so here's my sheet, and then I will ask everybody to say if they're present or not. Mr. Brown.
Present.
Mr. Haseman.
Present.
Ms. Hines.
Present.
Dr. Kenyon.
Present.
Mrs. Lance.
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Leeper.
Present.
And Dr. Shaw.
Present.
Okay, we do have a quorum present. Next thing we need to do is elect a new Board President, and we're going to try doing this a little bit differently this year. I'm going to send each of you an electronic ballot for nominations for President of the School Board. It'll take me a second here to get this set up. All of you should be logged into your Cedar Falls Schools email account, okay? And we're going to see if technology really works.
Mr. Neffsker is going, is called this new Board to order due to the fact that he is the Board Secretary, is the elected Board Secretary, to be able to run this portion of the meeting and tell the Board President is elected and appointed. So that is the reason why Mr. Neffsker is calling this section of the meeting together. Bless you.
And it would help if I picked the right person on the list here.
Bless you.
I took myology medicine at 7:15 a.m.[1103.08][1103.08](laughter)
That's a follow-up.
Yep. It took me till the minute.[1111.08][1111.08](laughter)
Okay, now each of you have sent the email. You should be receiving an email with a form on it asking you to submit a vote for nomination for School Board President. Once you make your selection in the drop-down menu, you will hit the send button, and you should receive, also then we have a second screen that'll pop up that'll ask you to confirm your vote, and then those votes will come back. Hopefully. Have a backup plan if this doesn't work.
That was awesome.
Worked, came through.
Yep. Came through, and I also got a confirmation email, too.
Can you log into your CF Schools account, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
And did you push on the little box?
Yes.
And I've got four of the seven bags.
Did you get mine?
I haven't, I just know I have four bags so far.
Oh, okay. So my, mine did it work, so.
There you go. Settings. Settings. See here, you see a guest. District. Password, you see a password. C.
Lower case c.
Yeah.
Capital P. One. Lower case t.
I think.
I got it.
You got it.
That one, okay, I'm at five.
Dr. Kenyon's unable to connect. He's been using the password.
Okay, then let's do it this way. What about you, Jim?
I should've been okay.
Yours hasn't come back.
Okay, I beg your pardon. Sometimes the best laid plans.
Sometimes the best laid, yeah, let's do it this way.
The important thing is that it's working for Susan.
It is, yep. And that's truly the reason why we went this direction this evening, because we have our remote to access and login, and we always go with that, that secret ballot, so.
Okay. I have six nominations for Dr. Kenyon and one nomination for Mr. Haseman. So at this time, we will go ahead with the formal voting for Board President, unless someone would like to.
Could I, could I make a motion to make this a unanimous ballot for Dr. Kenyon?
I would need Mr. Haseman to withdraw first before I could do that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Hearing the fact that I have heard of, that Mr. Haseman has respectfully withdrawn his nomination, I would accept a motion for unanimous vote for Dr. Kenyon as School Board President.
So moved.
So moved.
Second here, Doc's fine.
Okay. Just a second here. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations. So we'll have Dr. Kenyon come up. First, one thing we forgot to do, if you can tell I'm a novice at this, I need to, we need to swear in all our Board members, so we'll kind of work this through here real quick. And we'll do it alphabetically, and we'll start with Mr. Haseman. If you would please rise.
All right.
And do the right, I thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of Director of the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
And I noticed that time, I'd just like to say my, my relationship with the Cedar Falls School District started 40 years ago across the hall as a kindergartner. And Mrs. Fox's classroom, so, so, anyway, thank you.
Ms. Hines? Would you please raise, thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director of the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Dr. Kenyon? Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director of the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations and thank you. And Mrs. Leeper?
Do you solemnly swear that you will, thank you, that you will support the Constitution and that's.
I know that.
Oh, you have to swear everybody in. Oh, gotcha. Gotcha, okay. I was going to say, I didn't know we were going around the table, so, okay.
Okay, we'll start over. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of Director of the Cedar Falls Community School as to Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now, Dr. Kenyon will do your, the President. Do you solemnly swear, Dr. Kenyon, that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Board President in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations. And we'll let Dr. Kenyon take over the rest of the school board meeting.
So I haven't sworn anything yet.
You don't have to because you.
You already have.
You're already, but if we'd, if you'd like to practice.
Yeah, that's what threw me for the loop. I apologize, so.
Okay, Jim, I'm standing with my hand up, too, ready.
Okay, okay, we'll move right on to election of Vice President. We will try this again.
Sure.
See if it works any better this time. And so if you'll give me just a second to get this set up. Okay. Now it still says Board President. Is that, supposed to use the same form, or do you want us to use a different form? It says, should say Vice President.
I don't have it either.
Oh.
Did anybody receive it yet?
Okay, let's start over.
No.
Okay. I apologize.
Is it the one titled Nigerian Prince Needs Your Help?
Seven, $5,000, and it will release your funds.
Seven, five thousand dollars, and then we'll release your funds.
Okay, they're out.
Got it.
I'm missing one yet. Thank you. Okay, I have, um, a tie. I have, uh, three for Mr. Haseman and three for Dr. Shaw. So then what we will do is, uh, we'll have to go ahead, Mrs. Leeper, then, uh, what is the other person who received a, uh, ballot? So we'll have to re, we'll vote now then for actual President, or Vice President, excuse me, for either, uh, Dr. Shaw or, uh, Mr. Haseman. And we'll try this a third time. Okay. And the winner is Dr. Shaw. So, your wish will be. Thank you. Um, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Office of Board Vice President in the Cedar Falls Community School District, Cedar Falls, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you.
Um, I don't need to be, we're gonna adopt the written rules, regulations, procedures. This is the Iowa Code requirement that we follow and uphold the Constitution, as well as the requirements of the, uh, legal obligations of school boards across the state of Iowa. So, our recommendation is that we adopt the written rules for, uh, for policies, procedures, regulations, from Iowa Code, Chapter two seventy-nine point eight.
Thank you. I, um, feel that there's not a place on the agenda for this, but I will say thank you for, for showing, uh, your support for me. I know any of the six other people could do the same thing, and it takes a board of seven. And I know that you're all will be engaged in, in this process. Uh, one of the ground rules that was set many years ago for me was, uh, no surprises. And, uh, if you have questions, we should bring them to the superintendent's, uh, attention before anything on the agenda, to try to get more informed. So, with that said, uh, we'll move on to the consent agri, uh, agenda.
We need to, we need to approve.
We approve that, we approve those policies? Okay.
Okay, now who moved?
Susan didn't get a chance.
So all in favor of adopting the written policies and rules, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. Then let's move to the consent agenda. And, uh, I, we have two items on the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. We have now time for public comment, and, uh, we have several that have asked for public comment.
We have three people lined up for, that, uh, contacted, uh, us prior to four P M. today to speak on public comment. Just a reminder to everyone for public comment, this is Board Policy two oh four point four point one, where it talks about that, uh, uh, at the beginning of the, the meeting, obviously tonight was a little differently, we will allow public comment. It is limited to three minutes in length, uh, per person. Uh, we also, um, really promote that this is not a dialogue. This is a time for individuals who can provide these comments to the board, uh, and we appreciate the, the opportunity to hear from you. So up first is Mr. Larry Wycock. We will give you a, a one-minute warning as we approach two minutes, so you know, uh, when the three minutes will be coming.
I'm sure I won't need it. I'm pretty expeditious on my speaking. First, I would like to say that, uh, I very much appreciate the opportunity to talk. Uh, this is my first time, and, um, hope we can all work together to improve the health, education, and general welfare of the kids that, uh, attend our great schools. So, what policy has the school board adopted to control open enrollment? That's my question. According to the Iowa Open Enrollment Handbook, the city of Cedar Falls can stop open enrollment based on lack of space available. This is the first of several presentations that will take that stand, and the reason why we don't need new schools when we don't have an overcrowding problem, but rather an abuse of overcrowding. We now have plus two hundred and fifty-five students coming into our city, where those parents don't pay any taxes for our schools, and it's absurd that the forty thousand citizens and businesses should be held hostage to a policy that offers a cash cow for these kids. In fact, Jenny Leeper, several weeks ago, said that we couldn't change our Cedar Falls open enrollment policy because it was very quote-unquote lucrative for the school board to have this money. This isn't fair to the true taxpayers of this city and why two referendums have failed. I was asked at the open forum one September, what have I done to provide positive strategy for the overcrowding that Cedar Falls faces? If Walt Rogers and Jeff Daniels, Danielson, were here, they could confirm that I've asked them to team together and rewrite the open enrollment laws, so that portions of the one point six million in Cedar Falls open enrollment funds could be used to build new schools and remodel current schools. Has anyone here made that declaration or asked that question?
One minute remaining.
Finally, we have a line item in the school board budget for high school coffee shop income of sixty-five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But in all of the searching that I went through the budgets, nothing I could find in the transparent budget for where the one point six million comes from or where it goes. These are reasons why referendums have failed in the past. Thank you for listening to me.
Up next, we have Mr. Stan Smith.
Pardon my appearance, the stitches come out Thursday. I'm glad that this happened tonight, because there's an oath of offices ringing in your ears yet. I am petitioning the board to realign your board governing board meetings to permit unrestricted access by the public to your board meetings. The system you have now, took me two hours to get through to a human being, and they didn't know what to do. And you have effectively cut yourself off from the public, no reason at all. You represent them. You were elected to represent them, at large. That means everybody in Cedar Falls. They have a right to be heard, and coming up here for three minutes is for the birds. Even that Mickey Mouse City Council gives us five. I ask you to change your biologs, because I know that it's not in violation of Iowa Code two seventy-nine point eight. That code does provide for public input, but it doesn't put restrictions on it.
Thank you.
And then we have Mr. Klemody.
Thank the board for the time. I'd like to thank Joyce for her time and dedication to the board. To Jeff and Suzie, congratulations. Uh, you're coming in at a difficult time. A lot of challenges lie ahead. There's a wealth analogy at the table, Lena, it's the best source you've got. In Cedar Falls right now, there's an undercurrent of focusing on what you've done wrong. What is wrong? Well, let's talk about what's right. This board policymaking body has created some of the highest graduation rates in the state. Some of the highest composite A C T scores in the state. Some of the best, um, did I say graduation? Okay, we'll stick with those two. You're doing it right. We're going in the right direction. Another undercurrent we hear is fiscal responsibility. One of the best assets this community has is its kids and their education. They are the future councilmen of this town. To not give them the tools and assets that they need to develop into solid members of this community, I personally find fiscally irresponsible. Last bond issue, fifty-seven percent of our community agree with that. Stay the course and we'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klemody. Okay, uh, next thing on our agenda is the Secretary's financial report. Doug?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Kenyon. If you, you would, uh, open up your file, uh, to the, uh, monthly financial report, where you can view it on the screen. Uh, you'll see, um, I can do two things at once here. You'll see the monthly financial report for August two thousand fifteen. I'll remind, uh, the board and the, uh, audience tonight that, uh, all financial reports that we talked about on a monthly basis are cash reports and do not include any receivables or payables, uh, that a district may have. You'll see in the general fund for the month of August, we had a total revenue of, uh, one million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, uh, with expenses of five million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Typically, August is our slowest month of the, of the year. We receive no property tax dollars. We receive no state aid. Uh, the big amount that you see, the one million, twenty-nine thousand, that's all of, uh, student, or, uh, school districts that are sending students to the River Hills, uh, school consortium. Cedar Falls, uh, uh, school district is the, uh, financial, uh, uh, portion of that consortium, and we have the financial responsibility of being a flow-through for the funds for that, uh, program. And so that's why you'll see the, uh, one million in revenue on the receipt side and the one million, three hundred and six thousand on the expenditure side. So our, uh, fund balance as of the end of August was, uh, six million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And then you can also see where the breakdown is, what's in the checking account and what's in the various savings accounts. If we slide down to the second screen, you can see our cash balance of the general fund, uh, for the month of, uh, July, August, excuse me. Uh, we're pretty much starting to follow a tract of the fiscal two thousand fourteen school year, which was not necessarily unanticipated. Uh, general, uh, management fund is, uh, down below. You'll see that that's tracking slightly below, uh, where we were a year ago. That's, that is a planned reduction, so that's moving right according, uh, to our original projections. And the schoolhouse fund, or the statewide one-cent sales tax, we had revenue of the month of three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Expenses of the month, twelve hundred and five dollars, plus another two hundred and fifty-two thousand, six seventy-three, that was transferred into the debt service sinking fund for our debt service payments, uh, that the, uh, statewide one-cent sales tax is responsible for. So the ending balance, uh, was, uh, seven million, nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And you can see that that's up a little bit from where we were a year ago. Physical plant and equipment levy, uh, we had revenue of fifty-six hundred and seven dollars, with expenses of four seventy-seven, nine nine five. Uh, the, all the expenses that you'll see in that fund for this month are tied directly to the summer projects that the district's working on, primarily at North Cedar, uh, Southdale, uh, Central Services, and other facilities around the district. Ending balance of one million, seven hundred and five thousand, four hundred and twenty-five, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-six cents. Debt service fund, uh, you can see interest for the month was a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents, and then there's the transfer in from the statewide sales and service tax of the two fifty-two, six seven three. No expenses, because the, uh, debt service payment is not till December first, so the ending balance is a five hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents. Student activity, uh, revenue of the month of two hundred and thirteen, four thirty-two. A lot of that has to do with student registration that took place in August, with expenses of a hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. For a fund balance of six eighty-two, five eleven oh two. Food service, um, revenue of one thirty-two, three 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 four nine. Again, uh, the va, that all is from, uh, parents, uh, making deposits into their, uh, children's accounts for this upcoming school year. Expenses of a hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty, and that again is, uh, expenses associated with, uh, getting the school year cranked up and buying food and other supplies necessary to get the year off. Uh, so the food service fund balance was four ninety-five, nine sixty oh six. The high school student, uh, coffee shop fund, again, that's a new student-operated fund, very, very similar to our student activity fund, except, uh, it's considered an enterprise fund by the Iowa Department of Education, and as such, we have to put it in a sixty-series fund account instead of a twenty-series fund account. So you'll see there's no activity in that. I would anticipate that would probably change at the next month's report. And with that, I'd entertain any other questions that the board might have.
Anything you're concerned about in that report, Doug?
Pardon?
Uh, is there anything that you're concerned about as far as numbers?
It's a pretty, it's a pretty standard month, for the month of August. It's pretty normal. Not anything out of the ordinary. I explained the River Hills Consortium thing. Uh, eventually, that, that'll, that's all flowing into, uh, a trust fund, and you'll see that this year, but we sort of roll it in with the general fund. Uh, but it really is, it's a hundred percent other consortium member schools' dollars paying for students attending the River Hills school. So it's just, basically, we're just a pass-through. Or we're the fiscal agent for the consortium.
How many schools?
Twenty-eight. Unless another one came on in the last week, so.
This final, uh, sheet there at the bottom is in a little different format, and, um, mine is sideways, I don't know. I've always, I always enjoyed that, uh, that one also, and Doug has been very good to, to put that report into. Any other questions for, for Doug? Hearing none, uh, financial information will be put on file for audit.
Thank you.
Communications.
We are honored to have Senior Michael Flanshaw with us. Uh, he is our new student board member. We're very excited to have him here. Michael, I, um, promise you in the future, you will be on before seven forty-six P M. on, on rest of the nights. This is very, very unusual. So, if you wouldn't mind, Michael, talking a little bit about yourself, and, and prior to leaving for the report, we, again, very honored to have you here.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to, uh, be student rep and inform you about what's happening in the student body. I've been looking forward to the meeting tonight. Uh, my name is Michael Flanshaw, and I am a senior, and I'm the V P, the Vice President at Cedar Falls High School for Student Senate. Uh, last year I served as the Student Senate Treasurer. Um, I also play the viola in our, the high school orchestra, and I'm. Um, I also play the viola in our, the high school orchestra, and I'm also on the tennis team. So there's some of the things I'm involved with.
Can I interrupt you? Michael is also on the Cedar Falls City Strategic 2025 Planning Team and does a great job representing the student body on that planning team, so thank you for that as well.
So right now in Student Senate, we're busy planning homecoming. Homecoming week is next week, so it'll be a busy week. We have, um, the theme this year is Wild West, and we are playing Waterloo West on Friday, the twenty-fifth, so that played into our, our decision with the theme. This Sunday, we're going to be decorating the hallways. All the senior, sophomore, junior leadership are going to be decorating the hallway, and then Student Senate will also be decorating businesses, storefront windows downtown Cedar Falls with our homecoming theme and Cedar Falls colors to get the community involved with our homecoming celebrations. Um, this past Friday, on the anniversary of the attacks on nine eleven, we, um, some Student Senate members went and delivered cookies and bars to our local police and fire stations, um, thanked them for their service to our, our community. And then our, one of our next events coming up on Saturday, October third, at Fivefoot Park, is the Do Better, Be Better Run. It's a five K to support Mrs. Smith, Jamie Smith, our PE teacher at our high school, her Do Better, Be Better Scholarship and organization. Um, that's in partnership with the Dunkerton Student Leadership Team, so we always team up with this. Last year, they hosted, and this year, we're hosting the run, and proceeds will all go toward that scholarship fund benefiting one student at Dunkerton High School and one at Cedar Falls. Um, this past week, football, we have a three-and-oh record. We beat Mason City at home, and this Friday, we will be playing at Urbandale. So that's what's going on at Cedar Falls High, and I look forward to continuing to inform you on what's going on with the student body.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
That's well done. I will tell him that, uh, his father was my tennis partner back on a tennis, traveling tennis team a few moons ago. Therefore, I'm glad you're continuing that. And then as far as your run, um, October third, I just want to know, your predecessor always was out in the front on those runs, so. I expect that your leadership will carry through too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And thank you, Drew, for coming to me too. Okay, uh, we've got Mr. Conrad will give us the Career and Technical Committee Report.
Uh, it's not really a report. This is one of the few, uh, actual committees that, uh, the Iowa Board requires board approval on. It's our Career and Technical Advisory Committee. Uh, you should have a tab there that has the current, uh, committee members that, uh, at this point in time, uh, are, are going to be serving on that committee this year. That committee, basically, in addition to advising our, uh, our school with regards to career and technical, uh, advice for our curriculum and our programs that we have in place, uh, as a result of our Carl Perkins funding that we received, that committee also must approve our competencies for each of our, uh, career and technical programs and assist us with our program of study. And so, uh, it is an important, uh, committee that we have in place. Uh, there is a board represented on that committee. Uh, I know you, you haven't set yet your committees for this year. Uh, Jim Brown served on that, uh, the last couple of years, and so he's, uh, by, by the fact that you went on it before, I'm deepening on it right now until you change it. Uh, and we have one, uh, one new member that, uh, we must still locate for our manufacturing and construction trades, but at this point in time, I would recommend that you approve this committee.
Hearing motion to accept the committee as presented?
So moved.
We've got Suzie and Jeff. Any questions?
Uh, so I'm, I'm looking at our post-secondary representatives, and they're both from Hawkeye, and we also have a member at large from Hawkeye, and it seems to me there's another university in town.
If you would recommend somebody to be put on that committee, I would love to contact them.
Okay, I don't have anybody offhand, but I can absolutely make that recommendation.
Okay, 'cause there's no limit as to who we could put on that committee.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, all in favor of, uh, this approving this committee appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. All right, we next have informal reports. We've got an ACT report by Mr. Wedgley.
Good evening. I'm sure some reports are easier and better to give than others. When the data is trending in the right direction, it's always a little bit more positive to do so. So I'm going to start with the ACT results, and this is our 2015 class from last year. And so, um, if there's questions along the way, we can certainly address those. Just to start with, um, I'm going to give you a little bit of an overview real quick. We're going to look at the composite scores, how we did with our senior class last year. Uh, we're going to look at some comparative scores. How do they compare to state averages, national averages? That's going to then equate into ACT has some benchmarks for how college-ready are our students, and so they look at the each individual, uh, factors. The number of the percentage of students who actually take the ACT at our high school or in last year's graduating class. We're going to also follow up as where do we track the students? When they leave our building, where are they going? And then the last time, we're going to break it down a little bit by ethnicity and gender. So that's a little bit of overview of what we're going to look at. But here's where you see our composite scores, and, uh, we had two hun, our end was two hundred and thirty-five, so we had two hundred and thirty-five of our seniors last year take the ACT, and, uh, they earned a composite average of twenty-four point five. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Conrad, but I think that's the highest average that we've had, so we continue to trend in that direction. Again, you're always going to see a little bit of movement, uh, but it seems to be trending in the right direction. Break it down to the English, math, reading, and science reasoning, and, and also the composite. So you can see in the blue is the national, in the green is Iowa, and in the red is Cedar Falls. Probably where we had our biggest gains, uh, we're probably in the area of reading, and I think you're going to see that as we look forward, but, um, kind of follow along, you know, with our, our reading being at the highest with a twenty-five, science reasoning map, but below that with a twenty-four point seven. Uh, to break it down a little bit now, you can see the average, just a little bit different way of looking at it. Again, uh, you know, trending, you know, we've been at twenty-four point two back in two thousand and twelve, I believe. Took a little bit of downward trend and then started to pop back up. So you can see the movement over time. Uh, this is in relation to English. Apologize that it's jumping around a little bit here. You can see where the English, is that right? At twenty-four? Is that consistent with the first slide I showed? Didn't the average show at a twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Oh, that was reading. You're right. Okay, thank you for that. So the English area was in twenty-four, and you're going to see the reading here. There's the reading. That's the one that has taken a spike for the better. Our average math. And there's the science reasoning. So fortunately, the numbers are trending upward. Now, here's where the college readiness really comes into play. The college readiness is look at, you see the benchmarks. Uh, the benchmarks up above, uh, they say the benchmark score in English is an eighteen, math is a twenty-two, reading is a twenty-two, science is a twenty-three. And so as you look at it, um, it, it says, you know, fifty percent chance of obtaining a B or higher, seventy-five percent chance of obtaining a C or higher in a corresponding college course. And in the area of English, it appears that we have a high percentage who are very college-ready. So in the area of English, that seems to be a strong suit. Uh, pretty consistent with the math, the reading, and the science. And then when you consider, did they meet the standards in all the benchmark scores in all four areas? It was a forty-seven. Forty-seven percent. This is just another way to look at it. You can see in the area of English, five-year history, ninety percent, um, showing the college readiness in the area of English. The others kind of stayed consistent with the national and the state, and Cedar Falls showed a gain. Kind of had a tail off and then stayed consistent with where we are in math. It was a downward trend slightly, but, uh, just slightly trend upward in, uh, in reading.
Jason, ACT figures, it determines the readiness benchmark?
ACT does determine the benchmark readiness, that's correct.
And do you know how they do that?
I have no idea how they do that.
Okay, didn't mean to put you on the spot, sorry.
No.
I believe, Susan, it, uh, they have, they have communicated with college/university folks across the country to determine at what level of, uh, of, of science does a student need to be, uh, able to score, and if, I don't know if you want to go back, Jason, to that initial, they identified some coursework.
Biology.
So at the college level, it's college biology, and so they determined at what level of the ACT would a student have to score on the science reasoning scores to be able to get a B or higher in that college biology course. And so that's why they've set that at a twenty-three on the ACT in science reasoning, uh, which we believe is, is pretty high, but, you know, that, uh, and, and that's why in most cases, science is the area that, uh, you'll see some of the lower scores with regards to that. But that's how they kind of set that.
And this is, these are just national benchmarks. They don't have them, those broken down by state.
Well, they do compare, we do have the comparison between how our students did against the state and the nation, and the nation.
Okay.
But they're readiness standards nationally. Those are the benchmarks across the nation.
Right, right. You're right, that's what I meant, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I'll just touch back on that. That was the English, uh, that was the math, there was the reading, there's the science, and there's where we're meeting all four benchmark areas. And I think that's an area that we can continue to improve, or I think we strive to, strive to improve, as you know, we're, we're certainly hit the benchmarks in various areas. How do we have a, the holistic approach, or how do we get all students in, um, in, in all four areas? That's a, that's a mighty challenge, especially with the benchmark set at the level of which they are, but, but I do think it's something that we can continue to work for. So again, that's just another angle looking at ready-for-college-level coursework and comparing us versus the state and versus the, um, versus the nation. So that gives you a little bit of perspective, you know. You can always evaluate numbers, but as soon as you evaluate numbers in comparison to another dataset, that starts to tell a little bit more of a picture. And when we look at how we stack up against, uh, the state of Iowa, um, or the national numbers, I would say it speaks very favorably. Percentage of students actually taking the ACT, and you'll see, um, hasn't seen a whole lot of change over time, but we sit right now at sixty-eight percent. And so two hundred and thirty-five of our three hundred and forty-four students took the ACT.
Is that, is that also other, is that compensated by students taking the SAT?
We don't have, to my knowledge, a lot of students who take the SAT as much. We have a lot more students who take the ACT.
No, I know, I know, but it seems like we'd have, what's the number of our graduates that are college-bound? Is it, is it related? Is it only sixty-eight percent since that's the requirement to get into college?
You can show the next slide.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that'll get right there. Here's where our post-graduates and where they're headed. And you'll see that, uh, we had ninety-five of our students go to Hawkeye Community College. I believe this may be the first time that we sent more students to Iowa State than we did to you and I, but you can see where fifty-two percent of our population went in there to you and I at the University of Iowa, Iowa State, for another four-year college. And then you can see the numbers on the other side where they either went to the employment, military, um, or unknown.
I think the indication here is to go to a community college, you not need the ACT exam. So what we're seeing is more enrollment in college, uh, community colleges, not only Hawkeye but other community colleges. We can add that up, and it's, uh, almost, what, thirty-two percent of our, our total student population do not require the ACT exam. So we anticipate that number probably going down over time as more students enroll in community colleges, at least what we're seeing.
Another way to look at it is that eighteen percent of our graduating class took the ACT and didn't need to take it. You know, so we, we are still reaching some of those students. I'll also say, Jeff, that, that a lot of the students, the majority of the students that take the SAT also take the ACT, so. But we have very few students that actually take the SAT because that's normally students that go out east.
Right, east are far west.
Yeah.
That's a little bit of the breakdown, please, where they're going and, and kind of talking into the Hawkeye Community College aspect or kind of lead us into some of our other work that I will show. A little bit about the ethnicity, and you can see there, Cedar Falls is in the black, the state is in the, I don't know what you can call that, uh, the lighter color. It's the blush, sure. And, and you can see the comparisons there from black, African-American, white, Hispanic, Latino, and across. So, you know, we always take the data, we break it down into multiple areas to, uh, to look at, and I think that always just continues to give us further data on, you know, um, are we reaching all individuals? How are, how are people measuring up in different facets? So that gives us a bigger brush draw. This is by gender, and the male is in blue and the female is in pink, and, uh, you can see kind of how they do in each area. You know, probably there used to be a, a bigger difference in, in math and science of, uh, males in comparison to females, and that's really started to even more balance out, and you see it across the way. And you can see the composite is twenty-four point three for the males and twenty-four point six for the females. And then this is females versus our state. Do you want to scroll down for any of that?
Jason, can I, I want to make sure I'm, uh, correct in my understanding. When you showed that slide for the, the score for the first, like, demographic breakdown for the, uh, African-Americans.
Mm-hmm.
The composite score for our African-American students is twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So our African-American students' composite score is the same as the statewide average for all demographic groups. Am I?
That's correct.
African, African.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay, that's where I left off, the females, uh, Cedar Falls versus the state, kind of show the comparison there. Reading continues to be pretty strong in that regard, and then you can see the males in the comparison to the state. The bigger thing that I get from this is, number one, it's a huge celebration. I mean, there's a lot of positives that are trending in the right direction that we can celebrate. Downfall to that is, you know, how do you continue to make sure that we don't look at that and celebrate too long and say, what are the next things that we continue to work on, and how do we continue to improve? Which is going to lead me into the next portion, because what I think, you know, is we continue to see higher aptitude and, and, and better scores in our ACT and outside measures, um, there's, there's a level of coursework that's required to, to achieve those kind of results, and that's what we're going to dive into next. So I don't know if you have the, second one coming up, but this is going to be a little bit about our advanced placement, our PSO, PSEOA, which is Post-Secondary Enrollment Options Act, and our concurrent enrollment. So, you know, we take all this, how do we get college credit opportunities for our students? And again, um, maybe why we see ACT scores continue to go, those who plan to go, uh, post-secondary education, uh, that they have a plan, they have a purpose, and they also challenge themselves with the coursework. So a little bit of an overview, I'm going to pop all these up, uh, real quick. Enacted by Iowa Legislature in two thousand and eight, students provided the opportunity to take college-level courses while their time in high school. How do we continue to take students and give them the opportunity to take that rigorous work, um, in preparation for their next stage? They're offered at little or no cost to the student, and, uh, and it shows that, you know, these joint enrollment opportunities are more successful in post-secondary education. So the students who take advantage of these opportunities, there's a direct correlation and a benefit to them. And Iowa's one of thirty-eight states with policies supporting high school students enrolling in college coursework. So here's a little bit of a percentage of graduates who are enrolled in college-level coursework. That's either AP concurrent or PSEOA, uh, courses. And last year, we ended the year with seventy-eight point five percent of our population leaves with some level of college-level experience. Um, and, and that's a high percentage, but I think we're, uh, continuing to grow in that area, and we continue to see that trend. Advanced placement. Assuming most of you are familiar with advanced placement coursework, uh, we continue to expand that as well, an opportunity to take, um, challenging coursework while in the high school setting. They're scored one through five. If you're earning a five, that's outstanding. If you're scoring a one, uh, maybe you didn't learn as much or retain as much through the, uh, through that course as what you had hoped. So there's a list of our AP courses. We have biology, calculus, chemistry. I don't need to read all of it. A few celebrations with that. In our AP Environmental Science, we just offered that this year. That was a new addition for us. It showed us that we had a high level of readiness, and we filled two full sections the first year we offered it. So that was fantastic. We had a lot of students that said... We had a lot of students that said, that's a good opportunity for me. So that was a great addition for this year. AP music theory, I think we had 10 students in it for our first run, and that's co-taught with Elliot Prans and Gerald Ramsey in the music area. And nine out of the 10 earned a five, one earned a four. And those are outstanding results for your first go at it. So that was a huge celebration. AP physics and AP physics C. AP physics C is calculus-based, and the AP physics I, we have taught that as a Hawkeye class with physics I and II in the past. AP psychology continues to be a course that attracts a lot of individuals and a lot of students find success in that course.
Is AP physics C taken concurrently with AP calculus, or is AP calc pre-req?
AP calculus, calculus is not, AP calculus is not a prerequisite, calculus is a prerequisite.
So they would take calculus, say, junior year?
Yes.
AP physics C.
And they would typically be in an honors calculus as a junior and take the AP physics C as a senior. We just added US government this year, it's a one semester course, it's only going to be offered second semester, but that's a new addition. US history, comp and read, great books as our AP courses. One of the things we're looking at for next year is continuing to expand in the social studies and looking at AP human geography. So a potential addition for our coursework for next year. Why do we continue to offer more? Because the need is there, you see it jump, we have 549 students currently interested that are engaged right now and taking AP coursework. So that is a big growth over 14, 15. But I think, you know, I can account for those, we have two sections of AP human, or government and environmental science. Those are 100 of those right there.
Most, question Jason, most of these are junior seniors, or are there some sophomore?
Typically, they are juniors and seniors. You may have some sophomores. Typically, we see our sophomores right now that are taking AP, or US history. But for the most part, you're going to see juniors and seniors. And that's kind of why we have our honors classes, we have our honors classes to prepare for many times, they end up in AP coursework. And they challenge themselves early so that they're prepared to engage in that level of coursework. Percentage of total high school enrollment, we have 23.1%. Dan, the one question I had for you is, does that include ninth grade as a percentage, or does that not include ninth grade as a percentage? I didn't, I wasn't for sure on that one.
I believe it's just 10 through 12.
10 through 12, okay. But you see, again, we continue to build the trend that we have a larger percentage of our students engaging in more rigorous coursework. The average, just because you take the course doesn't mean you always take the AP exam. The AP exam does cost dollars, we're finding out, you know, some, they already know going in, whether I take the exam or not, it may or may not benefit me. We do like the students to actually take it because we want to see how they achieve on it. Because we do look at the data and we track the data, and that helps us to make further decisions. But about 68% as a 10-year average actually take the AP test. So not everybody does take the AP test. I know our teachers are sad when they see that five sitting in the chair and they don't take the test. But you know, that's just the way it goes, and so hopefully the numbers play out as they should. So the reason I brought that up is because the percentage of total AP students with scores of three or higher, typically if you get a three or higher, you're going to get some level of college credit for it. If you get a two or a one, they're probably not going to honor any level of college credit. And so as a result, we do care about scoring three or higher, but when you consider us to the state and the global aspect, our students do outstanding. We have a high percentage of students who score threes and above. Post-secondary enrollment options. These are the courses that we don't offer, and they can find them at either Hawkeye or at U and I. And this is taken on campus, so it's not something that we teach on campus, they have to go to campus, they take a college-level course, they've either been through all of our coursework in that level, or they had an interest area completely outside of what we offer. And as you see, it's limited to 11th and 12th grade students unless you're a 10th grader that has an acceleration plan or you've been noted as talented or gifted. So just a little bit about the courses that currently are taking advantage of with the PSEOA coursework. I don't need to roll through all of those, some are going to be a little bit more popular than others. Based on interest, based on students talking, based on, you know, whatever their pathway may take them. But we have a lot of options, I think that's probably, if you take anything from it, is a lot of options. Just a little bit of the trend in the enrollment numbers. Right now, it says, you know, the numbers look small right now because that's based on who's enrolled right now for semester, but you can see that we have 67 requests for second semester. If you add those together, we would have a total of 105, which again, you see a steady progression from 44 up to 105. So you continue to see students step outside and challenge themselves with higher-level coursework. So that's for our PSEOA. Concurrent enrollment. This is where the students are actually taking it in our school. It can be through a Hawkeye teacher, it can be through one of our own teachers. Typically, we're fortunate, we have a lot of staff with a lot of degrees. If you meet the requirements of teaching at Hawkeye Community College, you have the option to teach it for us under our roof. And we have a lot of teachers who work to make sure that they're qualified in that manner. So.
Just seeing how you react on your feet, Jason.
Thank you, appreciate that. No, that's okay. So our enrollment for concurrent continues to go up as well. Let me speed through here. There are certain qualifications, you do have to have a little certain aptitude, you know, ACT or compass to be able to have access to the coursework. So again, you know, we continue to open up the avenues, but we have a lot of students taking a lot of concurrent coursework on campus. Again, earning credit for the college and for the high school. Kind of redundant, I kind of shared. We do have some clusters, whether it be manufacturing, health careers, but we continue to look at clusters, just to not take classes independent of each other, but to actually take classes toward a sequence that you can actually do something with it. And I think we continue to make sure we don't just pull a class and pull a class and pull a class just by interest, we want to make sure that those classes actually create opportunity or pathways to an ending. Either that or it can be also exploratory, that they're actually taking a class that they may have interest in and find out before they go to college and spend a lot more money whether they truly, truly have an interest in that area or not. So you can see a few of our concurrent enroll, our course offerings. One that I'll speak to real quick that we're currently working on is our intermediate Spanish II. We're starting with intermediate Spanish II because it's in the second semester this year, and we're going to have an intermediate Spanish II, which previously was going to be our honors Spanish IV. And so we're starting because we could only work with Hawkeye to get it done for second semester, next year we'll have it for first semester and for second semester. So you'll see the intermediate Spanish I will be offered first semester of 16, 17, it just wasn't prepared yet. So if they were in an honors Spanish IV right now, they're in honors Spanish IV. Second semester, they're going to roll into a Hawkeye class, should they choose, and have the option for intermediate Spanish II. Our project Lead the Way continues to grow, and we see a lot of students enrolled in our project Lead the Way going through our IED, our engineering and design, principles of engineering, and we continue to see that led in a strong way. Concurrent enrollment, you can see 923. So in the last three years, a little bit more steady, but I would say it's still continuing to trend in an upward direction. I got ahead of myself. Biggest thing is I hope we see correlations between our achievement and our course offerings, opportunities for higher-level learning, continuing to challenge. Had a parent group meeting tonight, someone said, well, not every course that I took, I earned, I left with 30 college credits, but not everything went to the college that I was anticipating. And the reason they opted out was because I had such a high ACT score and, you know, and I was like, the thing that we want to celebrate is the academic preparation. Not everything goes to transfer exactly how you thought it was going to transfer, but you gained a lot of academic preparation, you had opportunities, you increased your toolkit. Hey, if I go this route, some of this is going to transfer. If I go to this other college, some of this is going to transfer. There's always a positive with it, and that's the one thing our counselors do an outstanding job. We continue to push students in higher levels of learning, and hopefully we continue to see that in our results. Yes.
So there is, the law changed as far as the minimum requirements to offer college credit. So for example, there are people who are currently Hawkeye professors who have to take a couple of more courses to continue being able to issue college credit. So I'm wondering how that is affecting the high school and if any of the people who were able to give credit count anymore.
I can probably address that because we just met with Hawkeye last Friday and verified what the new rules were and the.
Right, I have a copy too, I just got it.
And Hawkeye right now is, they're focusing on their full-time faculty as well as their adjunct faculty to make sure they meet all the requirements and so forth. They are just starting the process of looking at all the requirements or the qualifications of all the teachers out teaching the high school concurrent courses. They believe that most of our instructors that are currently teaching will be okay because of where they're at. And just so you're aware, the new rules that changed is that it used to be in a core area, you had to have a master's degree and 12 hours of graduate work in that particular area. So for example, you might have a master's degree in science, but you also needed 12 hours in physics to be able to teach a college physics course. And most of our teachers in the core area met that requirement. The state, and I don't know, the national, college, whatever the name of that organization is, is now upped the requirement from 12 hours of graduate credit to 18 hours.
The Higher Learning Commission.
Higher Learning Commission, okay. We recently just found out about it because the state of Iowa had been trying to negotiate with this organization to either grandfather people in or give us a longer period of time to implement or whatever it might be. And so now that the kind of the rules of the game have been set, the date of implementation is now the fall of '17.
I believe it was fall of '17.
We have two years basically to meet those qualifications. So we'll be working with Hawkeye to identify which of our teachers, if any, do not have those qualifications, and then we'll have to work with those individual teachers to get those qualifications, those graduate coursework or whatever they need to be able to continue that class. It could have some impact, but it mainly goes into effect with the core area courses, not so much the current technical side of the courses that we're currently teaching.
How many of these courses are taught on campus or on site, and do they take?
For the concurrent enrollment classes?
Right.
I think all of them, yes, all of them are taught in our building by our staff.
And then for the AP, all of our, the classes are on campus. The ones that are offsite are the PSEOA.
Correct.
And cost on that, how do we reimburse the institutions?
I'll let Dan handle that.
PSEOA, it's $250 per course. And basically, that comes out of our general fund to pay for those courses. The concurrent coursework is a much better deal for us because we actually can count those students for additional state waiting. So if they're enrolled in a college-level course, we actually get more than the state waiting for a single student that are enrolled in those courses. So we kind of make those dollars back, and it's kind of almost a cost neutral on those situations because of that. But we've had to, if you remember back when you showed the numbers for PSEOA, you know, about six years ago, that was about 40 or 50 kids. So we could easily budget about $4,000 or $5,000 and be fine with it. And now when you look at 100 students in there times 250 students, or $250 per course, we have to budget a lot more money for that as well. But we also believe that it's dollars well spent to be able to challenge those top students.
I had a question on your ACT scores. I'm sure this year is by and large credited to our phenomenal staff, but probably also those great parents too, I mean, I'm not sure, but I just throw that out there. But my question for you is, with the kids nowadays really taking it sometimes two or three times, I mean, do you think that's having an impact on the scores? Is that being seen in other states as well? Or, I mean, how do you think that's impacted scores over the past several years?
I will tell you, I will give you two answers to that. The first one comes from ACT themselves, saying that generally, students that retake it only improve maybe one to two points. And I will also tell you from a personal standpoint, which I had two kids that took it twice, and one of them increased one, and one of them went down one. So I don't think that taking it multiple times really makes a huge difference. You know, but we do have students that start taking that as 9th graders, and because you can take it every single year that you want to take it, if you're willing to pay the money to take it. But traditionally, and we don't track so much, all of our kids that take it three or four different times or two or three times, but I think the majority of them, it doesn't make a huge difference, maybe one to two points.
And the data we have is 22 years, and when you look back over the federal and the state composite scores, they're relatively flat going back those 22 years. We're seeing a good trend line upwards, which is positive, and I think that goes back to our staff, our students, our parents, and certainly the rigorous curriculum that we're asking them to perform. But by and large, nationally and statewide, it's relatively flat when you look at it.
When we offer like prep classes, right? If they, I mean, if they want, so they don't get in there and be the deer in the headlights.
And there are so many different prep courses that are out there, and some of them cost a lot of money. I think half the battle is just getting students to actually show up, sit down, review, and look, and actually put in the seat time. Because you could pay a lot of money for a review that a student will never sit down and take advantage of, and therefore it does no good. So I think it's just, how do I get in the mindset of, how do I approach the assessment? How do I read into what we're looking for? And I think they do a nice job within that. But I think, yes, there's a lot of prep courses and different things.
And I believe 68% of our seniors take the ACT, or took this last year, I believe.
Yes, 68%.
And I know some smaller districts can have a higher percentage, and even they have a higher ACT, and it depends on how many people want to take that test.
Anyway, a lot of things to celebrate, but continue to improve.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, David.
This is kind of an information for the new board members. Usually, once a month, we have some sort of informational reports. Obviously, this month was the ACT senior year plus, and you'll see as we go throughout the month, or months, I should say, we'll have other informational reports with different staff members that'll be here to be able to provide more updates, information, and certainly some of the celebrations that we see across our district, so FYI.
Next on the agenda is facilities discussion, and Andy, tell me where we are on that.
Yeah, I don't have a huge amount of updates. We're finalizing the survey that we talked about last time, we'll get that out hopefully at the end of this week, beginning of next week. We had talked about a September 21 work session, I'm not sure we're going to be in a position where we'll be able to hold that necessarily with a lot of good information for the board yet. My recommendation would be we postpone that and wait till we have the survey results back so we can share with the board and other data that we're collecting and working on. Not a lot of other updates as of right now to share with the board on facilities unless there's other questions the board has regarding where we're at, what we're working on, and the path towards facilities and the work that we know we have to continue to focus on.
Have we communicated with the facilities committee just to let them know that we're working on this and?
Not yet, only need to send something out. You know, we were hoping to at least have the conversation with the full board on what we are going to do with grade alignment and that discussion, so we can give the facility committee kind of a clear direction on how do we tackle the challenges, we look at what are our greatest needs and how we best accommodate the growth we're having as a district. So might be wise to send something out to them just as a memo where we're at, what we're working on, and certainly some of the discussion that's going on at this time with the potential dates that we could come back for a bond in the future, because I think they're very keen to that and would like to have that information, so good suggestion.
We have approximately 20 on that committee, is that?
Oh, I want to say there's close to 30 on that committee. I'd have to go back and look at the actual list, but I want to say close to 30. Mostly community members, some staff members, some administration board member representation.
Moving on then to superintendent for.
Oh, a couple of different items here. Couple upcoming dates, we have board meetings on October 12th and the 26th. ISAB Annual. ISAB Annual Convention is in Des Moines, November eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, we would ask everybody to put that down on their calendar, it's always a good conference to attend, good information to receive, and certainly good to connect with other board members across the state. They do a very nice job with some of their breakout sessions and general sessions. At the October twelfth meeting, to kind of bounce around a little bit, we're going to establish our committee assignments, as Dan discussed a little bit earlier at the CTE, but we have other board committee assignments at that time we'll need to look at and review. Also, we'll have our certified annual report on the twelfth, that I'll double go through as budget presentation and how we look as we wrapped up last fiscal year. The twenty-sixth informational report would be the AYP, and that's the annual yearly progress report that focuses on our achievement levels and our statewide testing results based on the No Child Left Behind Act. The other couple dates that I would put down as well is for our new board members, we do have new board orientation by Iowa, the Iowa Association of School Boards, and there's two that are fairly close by, one is in Cedar Rapids on October eighth, and the other one is in O'Wine on October twenty-first. I would certainly invite the new board members to maybe choose or select one of those dates, invite some of our existing board members as well to attend those dates, and I can send those out within a board update as well, but it's always good to attend, nice to hear some of the orientation, some of the ISAB informational components, and they do a nice job setting that up for new board members across the state.
And I think we benefit from discussion dialogue on the way, windshield time, I think it's good information for everyone, and particularly, you get to see how big this state is and the different schools have different problems and issues, but it's good information.
Does the Urban Education Network offer anything for new board members like that, or not really?
No, not that I've ever seen or that I've ever heard about, but that's good, might be something I can ask Lou to see if there's anything that they offer, because the Urban Education Network certainly has some different challenges that are focused on, you know, and sometimes much more relevant than maybe sitting next to somebody from a district with, you know, three hundred students in their total population versus a school system with six or seven thousand with the challenges that are associated with that. So I'll ask Lou that question to find out if they do offer anything.
My last question is, when do we set board goals? I can't remember when we've done that.
Yeah, we'll start working on that in October as well with our next board meeting with those committee assignments, a little later this year, knowing that we'd have the turnover and the new board, so we aren't in this evening, so we'll start working on that quickly.
Time for any other questions, comments on the board member.
Well, since I wasn't there tonight, I want to welcome Suzie and Jeff, I'm glad to have you on board, thank you.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you for running.
Thanks for running, thanks for being here.
Thanks.
One thing I'd comment, Jeff mentioned that he attended kindergarten with Mrs. Fox right across the street, right across the hall. My daughter had Mrs. Fox also, and you shared with me that she was Norman Borlaug's sister.
Yeah.
From the Norman Borlaug.
I believe so, somebody else can independently confirm that, but she had like an eightieth birthday, and it was written in her kind of celebration thing, so.
Impressive. Okay. I mean, hearing no other questions, do I adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you to everybody, thanks for being here.